2016th work session for the Gaston County Board of Education. I'm Kenny Luce, Chairman of the Board, and to my left is Mr. Jeff Ramsey, Vice Chair. I would like to let the Board members introduce themselves, starting from my left.
I'm Cherry.
Kevin Collier, Riverbend Township.
Yep.
Dr. Guthrie, Gaston County Township.
Mark Upchurch, Chair of Township.
Chris Howell, South Point Township.
Lee Dedman, Gaston County Township.
Thank you very much. Our first order of business will be to adopt the agenda. I think everyone's had a chance to take a look at that, and this will be, I will need a motion for this also.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Ramsey. I have a motion for the adoption of the agenda, and I have a second from Ms. Cherry. Any discussion? All in favor? And it is unanimous. The first item we have up tonight will be the follow-up on the Board's retreat with facilities and capital information, and I would like to recognize Mr. Holler.
Thank you. We're the Chairman of the Board, Superintendent Booker. Cherry and I are here to give a little brief review of where we were with our fleet items, with facilities and capital. The new plans and some next steps in that area. So if you do it, we have all this screen, and we also have a paper copy of eight slides that we will use to talk to.
Yeah, same as I said.
The first several slides are a quick review. And considering that first slide is a review of what the capital is planning off to take into consideration, we talked about those things in our retreat. Second slide shows where we are in our last bond that was passed, the 2007 bonds, which was a $175 million bond, Public County. It tells you that it was 2009, the county issued $80 million for that bond, and there's 95.
And then if you flip your page over and go to the final slide that talks really about the 2007 bonds up to date, is information that tells you that the county has some time left to issue that remaining portion of the bond. We appear to be having a small technical issue here. This slide shows where we are currently with the 2007 bonds in the remaining portion. 55 million, we expect to be sold this spring for our two new schools in West Gastonia and Stanley Replacement School for Stanley Middle and the consolidation of three schools in West Gastonia for our new elementary. And then there are remaining bonds in that 2007 package, about 40 million, and the Operations Committee has talked about the next steps for that $40 million. So I guess, to kind of sum up, our purpose tonight is to talk about those next steps, ask you to discuss those next steps, and then see if we can get a direction to move forward for the next steps of those $40 million worth of bonds. What our committee talked about last week at their meeting was to divide that bond request into two parts. The bulk of those bonds would be looking at $35 million worth of renovations and repairs to our existing schools, and then $5 million to look at a land purchase. We will talk more about the land purchase when we go into a closed session at the end of this meeting. The $35 million of priorities, we've asked our facilities folks to list the current $35 million worth of pressing needs, and they've done that, and we'll pass that out in a minute once we get to that point in your discussion. And I would ask Mr. Collier, the Chairman of the Operations Committee, if he might have any comments at this time.
And I'm going to defer to the other members across from me, Mr. Upchurch, Mr. Howell, and Mr. Dedman, because we did have a very productive conversation about what to do and should the money be spent for new construction or should it be spent for the repairs for the dilapidated facilities that we have across the county. We decided in our committee that we need to try to touch every township with as much money and equally as we can to have as big of an impact as we can with this $35 million. We know that there's higher needs in some areas than others, but in the end, this was the direction that our committee felt like we should recommend to this Board what to do with the $35 million. And I'll defer to Mr. Upchurch, Mr. Howell, and Mr. Dedman for any additional comments.
One of the things, Mr. Collier, that we did talk about for the rest of the Board, the importance of getting some buy-in from the county commissioners on that money being used for across the county. And the best way to do that is a lot like they did the hospital proceeds, where they did their township grants of saying, okay, let's try to touch the county, although we're not going to do it in the same format they did. But I think to spread that amount of money out across the county so that we kind of touch every school in every area or schools in those areas is important. One of the things we talked about that Mr. Collier brought up when we were talking in our meeting was that a lot of these things won't be eye candy. A lot of these things are going to be stuff that unless you tell somebody we did it, they'll never see it. And so I think one of the things we talked about was, do we do those things that you can't see, or do we try to do some of the things that the community can see, that the commissioners can see, and that sort of thing? And I think that's kind of where we left it the other week, was trying to figure out how do we spread that out based off of Mr. Holler's sheets and what he has and where we could put that money at in those areas? And then do we want to do stuff that people can see or can't see? And is that even a factor?
I think I might see a list first. I see numbers and I see specifics here, but just to get a little more, me not being as in tune with facilities, obviously, I sure wouldn't speak for anybody else. Curriculum is more my bailiwick, and that might be debatable. But until I see some specifics, I get the generalities, but until I see some specifics, obviously, I wouldn't want to make a decision on anything. Immediately, what comes into mind is, as you see Stuart Cramerton and Cramerton Middle, I think of those two immediately. Well, those are two of our newer schools, newest schools. And they fall into the South Point. I should know this. I know I should know this, but they would fall in the South Point District. So, you know, it's going to be very hard to be as equitable in certain areas as it is others. So I would definitely want to see where our needs are, and not discounting that theory by any means, but see where our needs are and then look at that aspect.
Well, I'd just like to make one comment just to that, if everybody doesn't mind. I think this is going to be in a very extensive list, and I think you're going to have many, many pages, especially when you spend a million dollars on painting, that's going to be a lot of painting in a lot of buildings. And when you spend one-third of what we're talking about here on roofs, you'll never see, you'll never know what roofs were put on, and nobody will ever know. They'll just know that on a rainy day, they didn't get their head wet. But I do understand what you're saying, but I think we have to leave that up to the Facilities Committee to a certain point, because it's going to be a very extensive list, and it's going to be a great deal of projects, if I'm not mistaken right, Mr. Collier, I mean, Mr. Holler, there's a great deal of projects involved in this $35 million.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Yes, Ms. Guthrie?
Mr. Chair, I too would like just to have the schools identified, be it May. And as far as can see, can't see, you don't see the things that are dilapidated or eroding or, you know, I don't care about not being able to see or not see. The schools need to be fixed, let's fix the schools. Because we know that if you wait to make certain that folks see everything that you do, you're going to have more to repair than what probably has been estimated at this point, so it makes no sense to say that. But if the schools have been evaluated and the needs have been identified, I do believe that we ought to present those schools that are being considerate, and then do the work that needs to be done.
Yes, ma'am. Mr. Collier?
I didn't do a good job teeing this up. Our committee's just kind of, this is a very rough draft, and we just wanted to get an indication to the Board if everybody agreed to spend the $35 million this way. We would like to take this back to committee and drill this down to the individual schools. And I didn't explain that up front, but we just wanted to get your sense if you're in agreement that this is what we should do with the $35 million.
I'm all for that.
But we'll take it back to committee. Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Dedman?
I think we need to also understand that we don't have this $35 million, okay? That we have $175 million worth of needs. This is $40 million that's left over from the bond issue. And, you know, we need to put some towards land purchases, and these are desperate, these will be our top-level improvements. I think that bond money was put out there to build new schools, but people need to understand, we are just crumbling apart in the $175 million, and this is just $35 million. So we will go back and follow what Mr. Collier said, and we will need to make sure that our commissioners are on board to help us to get some of these really needed top repairs that have to be done.
Thank you, Mr. Dedman. Any other discussion or questions for Mr. Collier or Mr. Holler? Yes?
Let me be clear, and I think my other committee members will support me on this, I hope. I was one of the first guys that said because of the newer schools in the South Point Township, that there's probably some areas where it needs to be spent a little more than in that area. Although, based on the South Point Township and the number of schools that are in it, there's still some that need help. And the comment concerning whether it's eye candy, stuff they can see or not see, I'm not saying that we do stuff they can only see and not see. What I'm saying is, the community doesn't realize that. So for instance, we spend $10 million at Hunter Haas, and most of it they can't see, and a lot of that community still says, "We haven't done anything to that school in years and years and years," which is not true. So we just got to be willing to be in front of the community and say, "No, we are, but you just can't see it."
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to thank the Board and our committee for looking into this and going through this process. Very worthwhile process for our own facilities, folks. They took a really, really big list and whittled it down, if you will, to a $70 million list, and then to a $35 million list. And these things that you see while you're not seeing specifics are things that are needed in our schools. And the list is fluid, because you never know exactly what's going to break on any given day. So it's not in stone, but the generalities are for sure. So I want to thank you for your consideration and your progress at moving forward.
Thank you, Mr. Holler. We do appreciate you and all the time that you and your staff has put into this. We'd also like to thank Mr. Collier and all the facility staff. Mr. Collier, I think you've got your direction from the Board to proceed, to come up with a more detailed list, so we could take a look at it, and then we could make the presentation to the commissioners, or we could give them a more detailed list of what we were talking about. All right. Thank you, Mr. Holler. The next item on the agenda will be the discussion of the 2016-2017 Superintendent's Budget Request, and I would like to recognize, yes, sir? I didn't know, I thought you had something. Oh, okay. I'd like to recognize Mr. Hoskins.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Vice Chairman Ramsey, members of the Board, Superintendent Booker. We're here for our public discussion for the local budget. A couple of things I want to go through. Number one is, I want to update the budget calendar. I know we've had some changes in the dates of the Board meetings and work sessions, so I tried to update that. I want to talk about the process of how we got here and what we did in order to get this information. And then most of our discussion will be focused on the expansion request and what we're going to request from the county, and then also open it up to try to get, you know, your concerns and things that you guys believe that we need to fund going forward. So with the budget calendar, we just adjusted a couple of the dates, because we had some changes in the Board meeting dates and Board work session dates. The bottom line is, this local budget request needs to be delivered to the county commissioners by May 15. Looking at the budget process, back in December, we started this budget process, and we sort of built on what we did last year, and that was, we put out the Google questionnaire to a lot of our stakeholders and asked them what they thought our funding priorities should be for the school district. And we gave them, I believe, 20 options last year. So this year, we took that, and like I said, we built upon it. We asked more people the same question, and also expanded the number of options from 20 to 24. And the stakeholders that we identified was our district leadership, all the way from directors, assistant superintendents. We also talked to principals, the teachers advisory committee, also the pinnacle leaders who were active in working with technology with our kids in the schools, the parent advisory group and the student advisory group, and also we went out to community and business leaders this year, which we did not do last year. So these are the 24 options that we asked for, and the four new ones were to provide more choice options. That would be the steam magnet, you know, the Highland that we offer, also additional remediation programs, more ESL classes, and increased funding for the arts. And as I mentioned, last year, we got 140 responses. This year, we asked more people, and we got 169 responses. But a lot of the answers were fairly similar from 2014 to 2015, but if you look at the top, we did make some progress, because we did address the teacher supplement last year. We increased that by a million dollars to increase our teacher supplement to try to get closer to the state average. We added about 25 teacher assistants. We added over 4,000 electronic devices with the $1.1 million that the county gave us towards the end of last year. So a lot of these things, we were actively working to try to improve, and you can see the efforts on some of that. So after we met with all the, or after we received all the answers from the questionnaire, we sat down and we went, we sent every fund manager their budget. We gave them their actual expenditures for 2014, 2015. We gave them their budgeted expenditures for 2015, 2016, and we asked for their budget for 2016, 2017. And we told them that we were expecting a flat budget from the county, because that's what we got last year. And then any new stuff, we had them write it up, and a lot of the directors or the cabinet members would write up a request. And the main thing we're looking for is, we understand the budget constraints that the county has, but we also are under the responsibility to let the county know what we need in order to operate the school system as effectively as possible for the kids of this county. So keeping that in mind, you know, our existing funding, we kept that flat, but our new requests are included in a handout. I don't have those on the PowerPoint presentation. But if you go to your handout and look, starting on page number seven, I think the last two years, we asked for an additional $10 million from the county, roughly. This year, we're asking for about $7.5 million. So we brought that back a little bit, but we're also, you know, having some room to get some input from you on any items that you may feel necessary for us to request from the county. So starting with our ongoing request, $60,000, this is for state-mandated increases in retirement benefits and health insurance benefits. And we attended a conference that was done by the DPI with the Chief Financial Officer, and he recommended that all the school districts use the increase from last year. And there's about a 1% increase on health insurance and about a 2% increase on retirement insurance. So fairly modest increases are projected for next year. So that resulted in a $60,000 ongoing expenditure for us that's going to be mandated by the state. The second item was increasing the certified employee salary supplement. Now, this includes all teachers, guidance counselors, nurses, any certified employees. And we're asking for $1.5 million. And last year, if you'll recall, we asked for a million dollars to be funded by the county, and then we were going to fund a million dollars with fund balance. Well, we had a flat budget from the county, so we got no increase, but this Board decided to still step up and get those teachers and those guidance counselors and those nurses an additional salary supplement, so we funded the million dollars out of our fund balance. So we are asking for that $1 million that we're currently funding out of fund balance to come from the county this year. In addition, you know, we continue to be below our peers when it comes to our salary supplement. And we use Cabarrus County as an example. To get to where Cabarrus County is, we would need to increase our salary supplement by one and a half million dollars. So we said, "Let's cut that into smaller chunks of $500,000 a year for three years to get us to where they are today." So we added that $500,000 to the million dollars that we're currently funding out of fund balance, but we need to get that funding from the county. So that's where our $1.5 million funding request came from for certified salary supplements. And this has been the number-one funding need this year, last year, and we didn't survey them before that, but I bet it would have been number-one in years prior to that. The next item is a $685,000 salary increase for classified employees, and that would include cafeteria workers, bus drivers, clerical personnel, maintenance personnel, et cetera. And a year ago, I believe it's 2014, 2015, the state gave a 1% one-time increase or bonus for these employees. And of course, the next year, there was, you know, 15, 16, there was no increase. I believe the state employees and also the county employees both received a 3% increase. So we are recommending also a 3% increase for these employees for this year in a salary increase, not a one-time bonus, so that we can pay a more competitive wage to be able to retain the employees that we have and attract new employees as needed. The next item is the Hawks Nest Steam Magnet Program. The primary, we're asking for $540,000 for that. The primary expenditure here is in materials and supplies. As you know, Hawks Nest is a 4-5 grade school. It will become a K-5 Magnet Program. So a lot of the materials that we have in the school now will follow those students over to Robinson Elementary, because it will now be, include 4th and 5th grades. So they will need those supplies, and we will have to provide additional supplies for the K-3 students that will be going there. So a lot of upfront cost for materials and supplies upfront. We are also proposing that we pay from our fund balance, the workshop expense, $60,000, so that we have, show in the county that we have some skin in the game, so to speak, and that we are vested in this as well. And we'll have some additional salaries and benefits of $100,000, and computer software and hardware of $110,000. The next item is increasing our K-3 literacy teachers. Every Title I school has a literacy teacher. What we are requesting is that every single elementary school have a literacy teacher, in addition to the ones that are currently at Title I. So Title I, they have one now, they would have two after this. And elementary school literacy, along with middle school math, continues to be one of the items that we need to work on. And we believe that adding these additional 29 teachers, plus the startup costs for those teachers to have an effective literacy program, $1,812,500 would be a significant benefit to this district and is a necessity for this district in order to get our test scores moving in the right direction. The next item is increasing the number of teaching positions by 22 for middle school locations. And again, I mentioned elementary school literacy, middle school math. This goes into helping lowering our existing student-to-teacher ratio, because middle schools have traditionally been higher than both elementary and high schools. We believe that adding these 22 teachers will help to improve both the math scores and overall scores of the middle schools, which are typically a tough time, you know, tough age time for students, and also it's, one of the areas we really need to focus on and to work on is the middle school model. In the same vein, middle school math, we're going to be ordering some middle school textbooks through the state textbook fund. We also need to spend some training for those teachers on how to effectively teach our children math using those materials that we have. And that $50,000 will be focused on getting those teachers the professional development they need to be effective in the classroom when they teach our middle school students. Next item is something new, kindergarten summer camp. Traditionally, I guess there has been no bridge between those children Traditionally, I guess there has been no bridge between those children that have not gone to daycare, have not been socialized in a environment with other children their age. So, this would help to do some screening of the kindergarten students and also to give them like a two-day camp to get them more socialized, walk them through the lunch line, let them understand, you know, some of the rules and expectations of the school, and try to make the transition for them easier than what it is now. So, that's what the $60,000 will be used to pay salaries for personnel to run that kindergarten summer camp. The next item was on here last year, it was not funded, is $300,000 to image student records. I think a few years ago, we spent quite a bit of money to try to catch up on all of our imaging. We had some extra funding. Since then, we have just been building up all of our paper records. A lot of the high schools, when a kid graduates, those records are not digitized, they're just in paper and they're filed somewhere in the school. We need to take the time and spend the money to try to digitize those records so that when a child comes and asks for their transcript, we're able to provide that to them in a timely manner and so that we don't have any privacy issues and that we don't lose any student Next item is DEC compliance. I think I read on Mr. Booker's letter, maybe Friday, he had an attachment about what they call MTS-S, which is Multi Tiered System of Support, is going to be mandated by the state by the year 2020. We are already in the process of trying to implement that. And what that does is it's a model to try to identify kids that need EC services. And when we identify those kids, it's obviously beneficial to that child that needs those services, and it also provides us with funding to be able to give those children services. So, it's really a win-win for the children and for us to get the funding for that. So, we need to have more staff available to do that, make sure we're in compliance with all the regulations that come with DEC. They're getting more and more complex. We've not really kept up as those regulations have been changing by adding more staff so that we're able to stay on top of that. So, this tries to help us get caught up and also tries to help us move forward with getting implementation on the MTS-S program by 2020. And then finally, a million dollars for replacement of end-of-life smartboard computers. If you notice, every smartboard, you see the screen, but next to the screen is a computer. And those computers were put online about four years ago, five years ago. So, as we're streaming more and more data to our students, these older computers are not able to handle that. You know, Ms. Madison's talked about opening up our pipeline so that we can get that data, but then it slows down when it hits the PC that runs the smartboard. So, this million dollars is to replace all of those computers that run our smartboards so that those smartboards will run efficiently, effectively, and be a positive tool for instruction for our kids. So, those are the items that total the seven and a half million dollar requests that we have so far. With that, Mr. Chairman, I will open it up for discussion on any of these items or other items that the board may feel that we need to address in our budget to the county.
Thank you, Mr. Hoskins. Well, I will open the floor up for discussion. Anyone that has any questions or needs some explanation? Yes, Mr. Debbin.
Gary, I'd like to ask a question about the, explain to me the 1.5 million for certified employee salary adjustments and how if we don't get that, we're still committed our million dollars. Is that correct? I mean, I don't want the teachers.
Absolutely.
The county commissioners don't fund this, and we don't want to leave them high and dry. Go over that one more time.
Right.
Please.
Last year, we had a fund balance of 8.3 million dollars, and we decided to use a million dollars of that, or the board decided to use a million dollars of that to address the number one funding issue in the district, and that was to improve our salary supplement. So, we did that. This year, or at the end of last year, our fund balance was about 6.3 million.
Is that your fund balance today at 6.3?
As of June 30th of last year. And, you know, it will continue to go down, you know, unless we.
We're saying.
It's about two and a half percent. We're about where our peer group is. But we need to get some assistance from the county, but you're absolutely right. We're not saying, we would not continue to fund that, yet we will continue to fund that unless, you know, the board makes some other decision. But that is to be able to fund that from county money, not from fund balance.
Yes, Mr. Howell.
Mr. Hoskins, quick question on your budget. When you presented it, you said our existing funding, we kept flat. And I'm trying to make sure, of course, you're right.
Yes.
And then you went into the new funding request.
Correct.
So, when that budget goes to the county, does it go as existing budget, it's flat, and here's new request? And let me get to my question and why, maybe it'll help you explain.
Sure.
Because if that's so, it's almost as if we're saying, well, I got a Ford F-150, but I'd like to have a Lariat. Where if we're saying that existing funding in order to have an effective school system, or we're saying funding for an effective school system includes not just what we had, but includes this too, then it's a little more of a higher priority than to say, to have an effective school system, we got to have 1.5 for this, we got to have 1.7 for that, instead of saying, well, our existing, we're going to present as flat, but here's kind of the accessories we'd like to have. I don't know that we can call these accessories.
Right.
What we're trying to communicate, Mr. Howell, is that we have a historical number that has been our annual funding from the county. And we started that as we addressed the operational needs for the 16, 17 year. These are the additional funds that we would need and what we're identifying those, just as you all have already authorized us to change the way we were allocating money at Hunter Hus. So, we don't start with a zero-based budget, but we also don't start with a rubber stamp. That's where Mr. Hoskins talked about. Each of the department fund managers has to present what their funds were, what they proposed to use them for the next year, and that's reviewed by the finance department as well as their respective cabinet member that oversees that department that begins to develop this budget. So, this additional 7.5 million is the dollars that we believe we need above and beyond the funding from the previous year. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, I just want to make sure we're not presenting it as an accessory item.
Oh, no, sir.
It is an accessory for an effective system.
And if you went back, you'll see the literacy teachers are something we have been asking for, for a number of years because we believe that program is impactful. As Gary talked about, the kindergarten summer camp, as we look at the children that we assess beginning of the year pretty consistently, we're a third that are ready to learn, a third about ready to learn, and a third that have a deficiency. We'd like to start addressing that before we address it in the first week of school. So, that's what we're proposing with that summer camp. So, we think these are necessities to run a school system for the ninth largest population in the state of North Carolina.
Yes, Mr. Collier.
I'm going to nitpick a single item here. It's, everybody here, and I think most people in the county know how well under the state average we are with supplements and funding our, paying our teachers, our certified employees. If we were to get this amount funded, we're still under the state average. But I'm curious if you happen to have how far under the state average we still will be if we can get this, through the commissioners to fund this.
The state average, our number at the end of last year was 2,229. At the end of last year, it was 2,229 on average per certified employee. This board authorized an additional million dollars, which came out to be about 10%. So, you can add another $229 to that. So, that puts us at about $2,458 currently. The state average at the end of last year was $3,689. So, we're about $1,200 per employee on average short.
Now, this 1,500, I mean, it's 1.5 million dollars. 1 million, 1 million of it is something we paid out of fund balance last year.
Yes, sir.
So, it's essentially, we're asking for only a $500,000 increase.
Right.
From what they're getting now.
Right.
What would that, again, how much is that going to add?
That's about an 8% increase. Let me see.
It's less than $100.
But we're still going to be in the neighborhood of $1,100.
Right.
Per.
This is a process, and, you know, we went five years or so without making any changes.
Right.
Two years ago, you authorized 3%. Last year, you authorized 10%. And this year, we're, you know, we're at 8%. Because we said if we did 500,000 a year for three years, we would get up to where Cabarrus is. They're about similar size, similar location. That still is well below the state, but it's comparable to where we are around here absent CNS.
And I appreciate that, and I'm thankful we were able to move the certified employees last year, but it's just, I can't overemphasize enough how underpaid our certified employees are, and we are fighting and doing everything we can to move the ball just a little bit, and it is still well, well below the state average. I know our goal is to try to get closer to the state average. I would love to get within 3% or 5% of the state average. That's kind of a goal that I have. I don't know that it's attainable in this county, but it's, I just can't say enough how underfunded our certified employees are. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Collier. Any other discussion? Any other questions for Mr. Hoskins? Yes, Mr. Ramsey.
Gary, I know that our work session or retreat, we mentioned sending that survey to the county commissioners. Did we follow through with that yet?
We sent that out, I think, in one of the newsletters, and I think some of the board members wanted to send that to them. I did not send that to them.
If we can do that? Yes, I would like for you to go ahead and make sure.
Absolutely.
Make sure they all have a copy of that, please.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Ramsey. Any other questions? Mr. Hoskins, we appreciate you and your staff with this explanation. I'm sure we still may have some questions when you get home and read this and think about it. And I think our entire staff would be open for anyone to be able to call and ask questions and get your, get your answers to your questions at any time. Thank you, Mr. Hoskins. Mr. Ramsey.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion for a closed session for NCGS 143-318.11A5 for property.
Thank you, Mr. Ramsey. I have a motion on the floor for closed session. Do I have a second? Mr. Collier has second. Any discussion? All in favor? And it is unanimous. We'll be going into closed session. We'll be going into closed session.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.